For Randy's benefit, we're going to take attendance. So Randy, Andrea is on the line. Rick Moody is here. Delores Bratton, Janine, Paul Webb, Amy Baggett, and I'm here. So that's where we're at as far as the board members. Everyone but Denise, I believe.
Okay.
Okay. So seven.
I have.
Denise is here.
Hi Denise.
So we've got eight people. All eight board members are on the line. And we will try and take any votes verbally so that you get an accurate recording of who voted which way.
Okay, just remember, I can't see you to tell who's making a motion and who's seconding.
I'll try and repeat it.
Okay, thank you.
So are you ready Randy? Can we call a meeting to order?
Yes.
All right, let's call the WCPL February Board Meeting to order. Because of the weather, we're going to try and revise the agenda a little bit. Or not try, we're going to revise the agenda. First of all, I don't see anybody on the line other than that's not a board member or a regular participant except for David Mitchell, who is the new foundation president. So I don't know that we've got any, I don't think we have any citizen communication today, which is normally the first item on our agenda. So we'll dispense with that. The second item was to be a spotlight report on the Koha system. But again, just because we're doing a video meeting and trying to keep things focused on the items that are time sensitive and we need to approve, we're going to delay that until a future meeting. So let's move into item three, the items for approval. We have the minutes from the January meeting, which have been circulated. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Denise Crothers makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Andrea, seconds?
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the approval of the minutes? Raise your hand or say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Randy, so it's eight zero. Approved. Financial statement. Dolores, do you want to do a quick update on that?
Yes, the financial statement is in pretty good shape. We have a transfer to move from the utilities line item to the communication line item. And when we get, when I discuss the budget, I'll explain that.
Okay. Any questions about the financial statement? Hearing none? We need a motion to close the main library for three more days next week so that they can replace the HVAC equipment on top of the building. Could someone please make that motion?
I'll make it.
I'll move.
Chris Rick Moody.
Rick Moody makes the motion. Janine seconds that motion. Discussion from, I don't know, I think there's been some emails circulated. From what I understand, the problem is they've got to replace, there are 20 HVAC units that are on top of the building. I talked to Kevin personally that are original to the building. They contain the old, I think it's R22 Creon that is no longer available. Or if it is, you have to go through the black market. We're going to update, they're going to update those to current date, current level equipment, which should be much more efficient than what we have up there. So the purpose for closing the building is they're going to have to have several cranes in the parking lot as well as trucks moving in and out. And you just wouldn't be, you're not comfortable with the safety, even going in other entrances on the building with all that equipment around. So that's the reason for the closure. It will be later in the spring. That will not require a building closure. Correct, is that correct Dolores? Jason, is there anything I'm missing there?
No, that's correct.
What three days will the library be closed?
Twenty-four, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth.
Yes. Now, they said they might be able to do it in two, but they allowed an additional day. I've lost. Can you hear me? Okay, they've allowed an additional day as contingency in case they get bad weather or get slowed down, is what I understand. Is that true? Jason's nodding his head, so he knows. All right, so that's the motion on the floor to close the main library February 24th, 25th, and 26th. Any further discussion or questions? All right, if not, we're going to call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Raise a hand. Wiggle your nose.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Randy, it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the transfer that Dolores mentioned. So Dolores, do you want to cover that?
Mike, it's just a transfer of money from the utilities line item to the communications line item. And like I said, I'm going to talk about that a little bit during the budget part of them.
Okay. You need a motion for that? You need a motion?
Paul, we don't need one for a transfer, do we?
No, that just comes, you're moving it from one item in the other, so it doesn't change the total budget.
That's what I thought, okay.
Okay. All right, so the big item on the agenda today is to talk about our proposed budget for 21, 22. There are three pieces to the budget. The operational piece, the capital, and any staffing requests. And I think that the way I'd like to handle it, Dolores, we haven't really talked, is for you to maybe give, you have a PowerPoint that you put together. And go ahead and do your PowerPoint, share that, and talk through it. And then we will vote on each one of those pieces individually.
Okay.
That all right with everyone? Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. We are, Jason and I will be tag teaming a little bit on this presentation. But I'm pulling it up now. Can everybody see it?
I can see your screen.
Yes.
Okay, so everybody can see the budget 2021, 2022?
Andrea and Randy.
Oh, okay, that's true.
I have it in.
Okay, the capital request, I've left it lean this year. I'm only asking for carpet replacement on the fiction portion of the first floor. This is the only portion of the building now, of the main library, that has original carpet. And one of the reasons for the price being as it is, is that Becca Flooring, their crew is going to have to rent some equipment that moves shelving. And that raises the costs a little bit. So, and then after this section is done, that will be all of the original carpet. And then, as I mentioned in the transfer portion of the meeting, we've got operations budget change that we're going to need to make. We have an additional Comcast cost for Leapers Fork. So that adds our communication line item to $34,000. It increases it by $10,000. And that is an extremely good price for the increase in broadband. So that is, that's due to our E rate. And then, we're going to talk about a little bit in some detail. Jason and I are going to be doing some tag teaming. But we've got some personnel requests. We're requesting a new 12-hour position at College Grove. An upgrade position of branch manager at College Grove would be circulation clerk is what Betty Cook and Mindy was. We're requesting changing that to a branch manager. And then we're requesting systems librarian. And this is where Jason may want to tap in in just a second. Systems librarian as a new position allows staff that are currently doing systems librarian work to free themselves up to do what their normal, their regular daily task would be. And we need a systems librarian to be able to troubleshoot any kind of an ILS system. But I put Koha there now because we've got, of course, we've got Koha. And we have integrating credit card capabilities between Invisionware and the ILS system. The, in the report that I sent out earlier today, we are ready to move. We've got all the funding in place, all the grant signatures have been signed. So we're ready to move on Invisionware and the ILS system. So manages data migration maintenance to an ILS system. And also serves as a liaison with an ILS vendor in library departments. Also serves as a branch, as a webmaster, and manages and creates reports. And then I'm going to hand it over to Jason to add his part to this.
Well, first and foremost, that does kind of run like a, just a list of what the person does. I have two salient points that I'll keep short. This isn't an out of the ordinary position for a library system of our size. I mean, I do view this as us just kind of keeping up with the standard of the librarian profession. You know, I think most systems our size has, have a system librarian. If you recall, we requested this position last year as well. And the need has not gone away in that year. Admittedly, it is true that you can find these tasks on job descriptions of staff that we currently have. You will find some of these tasks on the technical services manager, and some of them are on mine. The reason that those are in those job descriptions is because we had to give these tasks to people because we don't have a systems librarian, in a way. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we had to revamp our job descriptions for HR. HR asked us to just kind of list all the things that we do. And so we listed all the things that we currently did. But the reality is that what would normally be done by a systems librarian is currently being handled by several other staff. For example, we don't have a webmaster. We desperately need one. I think I just saw an email that College Grove's hours aren't posted, things like that. Jeffy does the majority of that work at the moment, who's the adult services manager. She manages the reference department, special collections department. She certainly can't be a full-time webmaster, but she does what she can, does a good job of it. But we could really use a full-time webmaster, just as a single example. We definitely need someone to oversee the ILS, especially if we ever decide we want to move to a different ILS. That, in my opinion, is just not an option without a systems librarian. At least right now, we don't have any staff that have the technical capabilities to handle that. And the Invisionware upgrade should be happening in a few months. We will get credit card capabilities at that point, which I'm very excited about. I think we're kind of way behind the times that patrons can't pay for a fine or their copies with a credit card. But I'm also very nervous because to my mind, I can't think of anybody on staff that has technical capabilities to juggle Invisionware talking to our current ILS system as well as run reports for our bookkeeper. It just makes me a little nervous integrating that credit card stuff without knowing that we have someone on staff to handle it.
Okay, Jason, you ready me go to the next slide?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And one of the things that I just wanted to briefly touch on is why a systems librarian needed is, for example, Jason didn't bring this out specifically, but there are numerous surveys that the state library has due. The standard survey, the public library survey, for example, the technology grant. That's material, those are surveys and grants that have to be submitted annually. There's also a summer reading survey that needs to be overseen. And also the E rate, the applications, there is regular E rate apps are due throughout the year. And that has helped us, as I mentioned earlier, on our communications line item with Comcast. It's helped the county tremendously going through the library to do this because we have been able to save quite a bit of money. Jason, is there anything to that you want to add?
You're muted.
Yeah, you would think we would all have learned that by now, right? That check your mute button after so many months, still gets me. I don't think I have anything to add to that. I'm certain, I'm, you know, willing to answer any questions if somebody, you know, has a question about E rate or any other kind of library jargon that's being thrown around. Clarification.
I got some questions about the position. Who does this position report to?
Well, ideally, and of course, you know, you and I are both on the organizational committee. And we haven't finished, finished the organizational chart. But ideally, it would, you know, and usually it reports to an assistant director. The assistant director type position that we have within the library is mine, the operations administrator. So that's what we envision.
Okay. What's the salary range on that job?
I think, Dolores, if I'm not mistaken, is that your next slide?
That's my next slide. I had a meeting earlier this week with Mike Weber. And we talked about funding for the systems librarian position. We have a volunteer coordinator position. And for the point of saving funds for, to the, for the county, I would like to recommend that the volunteer coordinator position, the funds for that, go to funding for the system librarian position. There's approximately $13,000 increase in what we would offer for a system librarian. And please keep in mind with this, I have not done specific numbers crunching with HR yet. Nor have I had the annual meeting with the county mayor. And that's going to take place Monday. So as of now, this is where the numbers stand. But keep in mind, that might change later on. Any questions?
What you're really having is a $48,000 increase in expense if you fill out the job. Right? You got it budgeted, but you're not paying, you're not paying anything right now.
We're not paying anything for the volunteer coordinator position. But the funds are still available to us for that position. But we do not have anybody in place now. So we're actually saving the salary and benefits of the coordinator position until we, until we use the funds.
You're not saving anything, Dolores, because you're not spending it. I don't mean to be blunt, but if you're not spending it and you're going to spend it now, you're not saving anything. That's phony money.
Well, that's the way that, the way that I have worked with budgets with the county previously. That's the way that we have looked at it, is that if someone is not in that current position, the funding for that current position stays inside the payroll line item. So it is not.
I got that, but if we're all, if we're all taxpayers, that's $48,000 more that's coming out of our pocket. Cash money.
To be clear, I think.
$48,000 additional money because of the allotment.
Plus benefits.
Well, yes, but what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying. I understand about, there's a big difference in allotments and spending. So I got you.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that point.
The money that would be paying the salary of the volunteer coordinator, we don't plan on filling the volunteer coordinator position next fiscal year, most likely the year after that, and maybe not at all. We have to discuss that down the road. So that salary that would go to the volunteer coordinator position is, I think, what Dolores.
I understand that part.
Right.
Can I ask what happened to the volunteer? Is there a reason that that position isn't filled? Or what was that role and why is it now on hold? Well, we need it again. Again, I'm green over here, but I'm curious about that.
Dolores, do you want to, she was my director.
I'll tackle that. The, currently, we are not having volunteers coordinating and working in the library as they were before the pandemic. Nor do we have anyone using our meeting rooms prior, as they were prior to the pandemic. And the volunteer coordinator, coordinator position, we had envisioned, and I think perhaps a lot of the trustees did, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but thought that they would be, they would be working with the branches more than they did. Branches turned out to be a situation where they wanted to handle their own volunteers. So I don't see, I mean, I definitely don't see an immediate need for a volunteer coordinator. But I do see an immediate need for a systems librarian.
I do have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead, Amy.
The person resigned. We had someone in that job, Amy. And last summer, she resigned to take another position. So that's why the job is currently vacant. I would like to hear how other people feel about reusing that job.
It makes, I mean, it obviously makes good sense that there's not a volunteer coordinator in a pandemic when we don't have volunteers. But I just didn't know how that was used in the past, if that was a useful position. And then, because then eventually down the road, we'd have to re-add it. Which, but I think that's a good point that you made, that we don't need it right now. The funds are a lot for it. And you felt like we do need the systems librarian. So I hear what you're saying. I just, I was just thinking that through.
We still do have volunteers, though.
Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
We still have volunteers, Dolores. The friends are, the friends of the Frank and the Library are doing a one-on-one book sale this weekend. And maybe the weather's changed that, but.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
What we don't have is an active effort to try and look for additional opportunities to incorporate volunteers. And I won't accept that the branches, just because we made one visit to the branches and they pushed back on the idea of somebody helping with volunteers, means that's the end of the story.
Well, Mike, I think it was, it was more attempts than just a visit to the, to the branches. We, there were numerous times where we tried to coordinate the volunteer coordinator position in with the branches. And it didn't work at the, in the way that we thought it would. I kind of look at the volunteer coordinator versus the systems librarian position as, when I first started looking at and working with budgets a long time ago in the library world, there, one of the questions that my immediate boss would always ask me, is it, if you're looking at a position, is it a want or a need? And I see that the volunteer coordinator position, I agree that it's a need. But in my opinion, when you stack it up against the needs the library has for a systems librarian position, it's more of a want. We desperately need the systems librarian position. If we're going to move on to next steps in technology such as Invisionware, switching over from a Koha, from the Koha system, all the previous things that we talked about.
Dolores, does Brentwood Library have a systems librarian?
Paul can speak to this, too. I don't, I don't believe that they do, but I do think that it's something that they have asked for in the past and haven't received yet.
Well, I'm not aware of one, are you?
I have a question.
And I don't have an answer to that. That would have to be something we'd have to ask Susan, unless Marion has an answer for that.
I think at one point, excuse me, it used to be part of the standards. And so I know that Brentwood, in the long distance past, it was probably when Chuck was there. They asked for that position. But the amount of money it would cost, they said, was too expensive for the, what I remember them saying is, it would make them one of the highest paid people at the library. So they ended up, the city more or less assigned someone from their IT department to work at the library, is what I think happened. But what the situation is today, I'm not sure.
They don't have one, they must be using the city. Andrea, you had a question?
I have a question.
Okay.
How long has our library been without a systems librarian?
It's, we've not, well, on paper, I was the systems librarian when it first moved to administration. It's a little bit of a tricky answer because we previously had Kathy Ossie, whose title was not systems librarian, but she did fulfill that role within the library. So it's a little bit hard to say, yeah. We didn't really need a systems librarian while we had Kathy Ossie on staff.
Again, I'm sorry, y'all. I just got to get it all out. So Jason, you were hired as systems librarian and then?
No, yeah. It's a good, yeah. I was hired originally as the special collections librarian for genealogy and local history. When Kathy Ossie passed, who was the technical service manager, she passed unexpectedly. Dolores asked me to move to administration. And the first job title I had in that capacity was systems librarian. For the most part, and Dolores could explain this better, for the most part, because she didn't really know what else to call me. As my role evolved, in the first year that I was there, we realized I was doing assistant director work, not systems librarian work. Like, I couldn't go to any other library in the country and do the work that I was doing and be called a systems librarian. Nor was I qualified to be systems librarian. So we changed that title to operations manager because, from my understanding, the county didn't like the assistant director title. So that's the short history.
No, thank you for clarifying. I was unaware of that.
Amy, let me, let me jump in, too, to clarify a little bit, a little bit more. Kathy did pass away unexpectedly. And she was doing not only her technical services manager's job, not only was she doing the system librarian job, she was also doing the webmaster position, too. So losing that kind of bandwidth, all of a sudden, I did not know exactly how that was going to play out. All I knew was I needed to make some changes at that point. All I knew was I needed to make some changes at that point. So I brought Jason in, and I said, well, Jason, I needed, for example, I need an IT department liaison, and I need somebody to work on the stats. So for now, we're just going to, we're going to give you a title of systems librarian. And as Jason said, as it continued on and duties were more designated, we got a clearer picture of what was needed. And then we changed the position that Jason was doing to a broader operational administrator type position.
That's helpful.
I'd like to comment on something Jason said previously about the job descriptions for tech services manager as well as operations administrator, those two positions. If you look at those job descriptions, they include the work that a systems librarian would take care of. Everything is included there except for a webmaster. So in my opinion, we have the positions. We just don't have, we just don't have the people doing that work.
I would agree with that in part. There are some things that a systems librarian does that admittedly, we don't have anybody on staff that has the technical chops to do, certainly. But it's kind of like we took what would have been a systems librarian job and had to break it up and give it to five different people to do. What we're kind of asking for is someone to do that one job so that we could take those tasks away from Jeffy and from Marcia and from Leela and CIRC department and myself to do that full-time. Yeah.
I have a question. I also want to just also say, just real quick, let me just say that I think it's been a very big disservice to the staff that we haven't had anybody that has been designated in that role. It's been going on for a long time, and I think that's a very bad thing that it hasn't been taken care of. And Jason, I don't want you to take that personally because I know that you have a lot of things that you do and do well. I'm just saying for the overall organization thing, it has been let go for a long time, even though we have those named jobs described in those positions.
I agree. We've needed a systems librarian for a long time. Yeah, I'm the first one to raise my hand with that. Yeah.
I have another question.
It appears to me, though, that one of the problems that we have is that we have all these job descriptions, and people aren't doing what the job description is, but if you take and shuffle stuff around, there's probably somebody there that can do it and get it done. And it makes it really hard when you come and we want to create a new position. I don't question we need somebody that can do the systems, but it's just hard to have all these people doing not exactly what they're supposed to be doing or what's on the piece of paper. I just think that's an issue.
Rick, if I could chime in for a second, that clarifying and having a systems librarian that can target on the needs specifically of what we've been bringing up in this conversation is really what's needed. It would more, having a systems librarian would more clarify Circulation's role, it would more clarify Jason's role and Jeffy's role, others that have been pulled upon to do this work. I think it would be a great asset to the organization, and I think overall, it's like Janine said, I agree with what Janine said. I think the staff feels like it's been kind of a disservice, especially folks in Circulation.
If I was a hard, if I was being a hard-nosed businessman, I'd say my next question would be, if you take that work away from people, so what are they going to do now? They're going to fill that time that.
That's an easy.
If you're taking stuff away from them.
Yeah.
What are they going to do?
That's an easy, that's an easy answer, Rick. I'll give you an example with Jason. There's been numerous times where I would consult with Jason on, perhaps on the Envisionware project. And then I would look in his office and I would see his list on his whiteboard of statistical reports, state library reports that are due at that certain time. So it's been, it's a burden on, it's been a burden on him, but it's been a burden on the staff as a whole. There's been, for example, Circulation has worked with trying to solve tickets, doing basically systems librarian work for less, probably less than half the salary a systems librarian would be doing.
Yeah, while trying to check people out and fill orders and staff.
Yes, trying to do their other stuff. So I could find probably Jason two more jobs to do if he was released from all the stats and stuff he's doing now.
Okay, what's a technology service, technical services manager going to do with the free time that you get from taking jobs away from her?
I can at least partly clear some of that up. Technical services manager, I think part of the problem with that job position, frankly, is just the title. I don't know why in the history of librarianship, that position decided to be called a technical services manager. It's standard across the profession, but what she should really be called is head of cataloging and acquisitions, because that's what she does. When you say technical services manager, people think IT. She really doesn't have anything to do with IT. She heads the cataloging department and manages our acquisitions, which includes buying databases and books. Dolores, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, for, yes, for example, I've been working with Marcia to update our cataloging and acquisitions. When we started putting the survey together, I had talked with her and with others, I really would like for Marcia and technical services to focus on cataloging and selection of materials. Our material selection, I think, needs a lot of work. And that's what, that's one reason, I mentioned it to Amy and Janine, who's been on the survey meetings, but I would like to.
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan meetings, yes, where we've done the survey. I would like to have that department and especially Marcia focus on getting our collection better in shape, curating it, ordering materials that's going to move. And yes, I have been able to, I've been working with her on that, but having someone in place that we were talking about, like a systems librarian, would make being able to focus much easier.
Let me go back to something that Jason said. She, the tech services manager, may be the cataloger, and that may be what the description of her job actually is. But again, if you go back to the job description, it is most of the work of the systems librarian. It's just not getting done. I have a question, comment.
And the cataloging and acquisitions work that I feel the library desperately needs to get done is not getting done either.
Well, I agree with that, too.
Dolores, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, yes, I do. The ILS system. When we got into the current ILS system, that was, we're hitting almost three years. And who was the person, I'm assuming that person would know how to run the system. Yet you're telling me, or I'm hearing, that we don't have anyone on staff that can manage an ILS system that we purchased three years ago, and you approved it, and we are now getting into Envisionware, and it sounds like we don't have anybody on staff. So why would we add another program if we don't have someone who can run it? And why did we add or change from the ILS system we had to Koha if we did not have a person who could do this? And we're three years into it.
Dolores, we have talked about, we have talked about this previously. We do have people that can work with Bywater and do, you know, make up Koha tickets, and Bywater requests the change in the system. They'll go in and they'll make that change. So, but that is not what they are hired to do. This is what, this is part of the concern that I have with staff, and we mentioned earlier. We've got CIRC staff that goes in and makes changes to the system because there's a ticket that came up and that this change needs to be made. And they really should not be, they should be able to focus on their regular duties. They should not have to focus on something that is beyond their salary range and their job description. But that is the reason that we've been able to live with Koha the way we have over the last few years, is that we've had people working, you know, Jason may be able to help a little bit with this on the website or Koha. CIRC may be able to work with this a little bit on the website and Koha. So we've got, we've got some knowledge pulled from different directions, but when it, but there are things that we do not have in the staff, for example, SQL knowledge to create reports. And Bywater has helped us, Bywater has helped us with that. So we've been able to make it because we've had Bywater as an intermediary telling staff that are not specifically trained in this area what to do.
I understand what you're saying. Was it the tech services? I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Was it bad judgment to jump into a system that required all these additional staffing capabilities without having the appropriate resource in place?
We thought, Mike, at the time, and we've talked about this, too, we thought at the time with Bywater that in places of vendor, that they would be able to help us manage this open source system. And they have to a certain extent. Like I said, you know, they will work with CIRC or with Jason or whoever needs to make a change into the, change in the system. But it has not been smooth at all. That's why I have talked to the trustees and the trustee leadership change team about switching from Koha. And part of the reason why Jason, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think that's one reason Jason is so passionate about the systems librarian position is that when we move on, we're going to, we want it to run smoother. That was a problem that we saw when we moved out of, onto Koha that we weren't aware of.
Certainly.
I have a comment, please. I have a comment and a question and maybe another comment. My comment is, Rick and I are on the staff organization committee. The staff told us, which, you know, obviously, we haven't done our report yet, but they told us that the one thing that they would, the staff would all agree on that would make the library run better, that would make the patron experience better, that would improve the overall library system as a systems librarian. That's my first comment. My second comment, or well, my second one is a question. Is Paul in the room by any chance?
Yes.
Paul, how much money did the volunteer coordinator earn for Brentwood?
Yeah, you know, I don't know because the only public information we have about salaries from the Brentwood Library is for the director. The rest of those people are city positions and they're typically, you can find it when you go through the budget. I never knew what that person was paid.
No, I think I remember when we were debating the position in the first place, that that was one of the things that the county liked about volunteer coordinator position when they wouldn't approve the systems coordinator, was that she earned money for the Brentwood Library.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was, that was what I was asking, not what her salary was, but how much money she efficiently brought into the Brentwood branch.
I think that the thing to answer that question wasn't so much as a profit center, but that it increased the number of programs that the library put on. And so, and then also the volunteer hours, which the Brentwood Library has tracked as well as some of the other functions in Brentwood. It was in the thousands of hours, not including the book sale. And so.
And that was what they liked about that position, was that the volunteer hours shows them how much money that we, the volunteers save the county, correct?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. We saw that a while back. Maybe, Mike, I don't, can't remember that exact number, but we've seen those numbers and they show it every year.
Surprisingly, it's not down very much, even with the pandemic. Their numbers have held up pretty strong in the pandemic, volunteer hours. One other comment, Andrea, I don't know what the job paid, but their position was not full-time, and they had a lot of turnover in the job because of that.
Okay.
We had a full-time job, and frankly.
I've got a question.
I hate to abandon it before we've really given it a chance to work. Rick?
I want to ask a question about, Jason, you were talking about getting the credit card or debit card system integrated into the library system?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And are we not going to piggyback on the county's system?
We, well, to a degree, we are, but the problem for us at least is that the credit card system has to integrate with our ILS system. The ILS system is the system that determines how much patron owes in fines, right? And it is also the system that tracks how much money we've taken in for us to report to the county. At the end of the day, we tell the county, we made this much money today, we're putting this much in the county's bank account, putting this much in fines and so on and so forth. So my concern is that now that we're going to have money not changing hands but just going over wires, how well is that credit card system going to integrate with the ILS? I certainly don't.
Can you not make the vendor, yeah, can you not make the vendor make it work? Just say, look, if you're going to, if we're going to use you, you got to make it work.
Yeah, that's certainly my hope at this point, is that the vendor can make it work. I don't know what we'll do if something goes wrong or we need to troubleshoot it.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard that, I've heard that dog and pony, I've heard that a lot when you go try to sell credit card systems, that they say, it's got to work, and you got to make it work if you want me to use your system.
Yeah, it may be that I'm a little, probably honestly, like a lot of the staff, I'm a little gun shy at this point because of our experience moving to Koha, you know, because we heard, well, the vendor's going to handle all the problems with us, we're going to move, and then, you know, as Dolores said, we're three years in and we're still having problems, you know? And being on this.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand, you know, it always works before you buy it.
Yeah, absolutely right.
How much are we paying Bywater?
That's true.
What do we pay Bywater? What do we pay Bywater? Twenty thousand a year?
I think, I'm trying, I'm having trouble hearing the question.
The question is, how much money are we paying Bywater?
I think it is somewhere around fifteen, maybe fifteen, twenty thousand a year.
It's a little bit over twenty thousand. It's in between twenty.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
Twenty-two thousand, maybe? So, back to your concern, Jason, we got a third party that's supposedly an expert with Koha. We paying them twenty-two thousand dollars a year? If we need to integrate a credit card system with it, they ought to be able to help us for the money that we're paying, or we got the wrong vendor, not for the credit card system, but for the ILS.
That is currently our hope.
I totally, I totally agree with that.
You recommended this vendor, Dolores.
Which vendor? Are we talking about?
Bywater.
Well, at the time we moved over, at the time we moved over to Koha with Bywater, I was thinking in terms of the ILS. And I was not thinking in terms of moving toward credit cards payments, which has happened, which has happened. which has happened, uh, which has happened recently. And also I, you know, I'm not sure that InvisioWare and between InvisioWare as a vendor and Koha as a vendor and the county budget office, I'm not sure that we can't make it work. We are just now getting all of the funds in place to move forward.
Okay, we, we need to somehow get focused on getting through this budget discussion. So you've done, is there more that you need to present, Delores?
Uh, there's a, a little bit more to present. Let's see.
You didn't talk at all about, yeah.
Also, I wanted to talk about, um, let's see, I wanted to talk about College Grove briefly. We have asked for a 12-hour position for, uh, to assist with College Grove. And, let's see. And because, uh, because that is one of the last things Betty told me when I talked with her before she retired, that even if it was just, um, a 12-hour position that would help tremendously, uh, it helping that one person out at that location. And so I, and if we do that, hopefully, I, I would like to also upgrade the position there to more of a branch manager position and not a SERC clerk, which is the current position. Uh, and the reason that I'm do, that, uh, I would like to do that is that she, the duties at that location is more tuned to a branch manager or a reference associate type position more than it is a SERC clerk. So, and that was one of the conversations that I had with, um, Mike Weber too, earlier this week.
Was board approval required for that, Delores, or is that just an HR decision?
Um, no, what happens is, hold on just a second.
Reclassify a position, does that require the board to approve it?
It require, um, the board needs to, I mean, I would like to see the board in, in sync with the county, but, uh, the county HR department goes through the HR committee and requests positions and then the HR committee approves it. And then that goes to the overall budget committee, then it goes to the overall commissioners.
You have answered a question. Do we have to approve this or is it just a decision of the county? Is there a board, a board approval required to reclassify the College Grove lead position?
If, if the county sees that the funds are available to do it, I would not think that it would necessarily require, uh, approval on your, on, on the board's part. Paul, do you agree with that?
I think in positions like this, whether it's the library part, whatever, um, a, a board ratification of the request carries a lot of weight.
Can I, can I just make a, a, one more question is, so she's currently the SERC clerk. You want to up, upgrade her to board manager? So then wouldn't someone need to be a SERC clerk, circulation clerk? And then you're hiring this other 12, it feels like, it feels like a lot of people are not doing, if she's, it feels like maybe the job descriptions are messed up or something like, I, I think I'm just confused, like, wouldn't someone need to do her current role if she's getting upgraded?
Do you mind if I jump in real quick? Uh, College Grove's a little bit of a, you know, that's a very small library, but the problem we're having at the moment is that, um, Betty is already retired. Jennifer, who is the branch manager at Nolansville, is kind of pulling double duty and actually sitting at the desk herself. Everyone I've interviewed to replace Betty has turned the position down when we've offered it to them because of the money. It's like thirteen dollars an hour. We can't offer more money for that position if we have the job title of SERC clerk. What HR tells us.
So we need to change the job title so we can get a higher salary so we can get a better person?
So that we can find.
Would you still do the duties of SERC clerk? Or, you know, does that change the description, I guess, is my question?
I mean, she'll, honestly, I think the position should have been changed prior to us having to get someone in it because Betty was doing more than a SERC clerk while she was there.
So there's a lot with job positioning that's kind of, we're kind of cleaning up right now or hoping to, I guess. Okay, thank you, that clarified that.
Well, there'll be some additional cost for this increase, won't there?
Sure.
Yeah, so that's probably what the board would need to approve, asking for.
But you have to have any amount here. We need to know what the money is if you wanted to prove, there's no, there's no amount given.
Well, that's, Mike, that has to do with the fact that I have not, um, I've not been able to numbers crunch, so to speak, for that position. And as I mentioned earlier, I've not been able to numbers crunch with HR, uh, exactly on the systems librarian position. So that you have to, you know, we approved the budget, the trustees approved the budget in, in February, but there's a lot of work that goes in between the time we approve the budget as the board of trustees and the time it's submitted. So everybody now is just beginning to get their numbers, uh, crunched and meet with the mayor and Mike to, um, to find out exactly the costs of these positions that we're requesting.
I, I guess I don't buy that. You know, she's a senior circuit, the position's a senior circulation clerk right now. You know what that's been costing you? You know what a branch manager approximately costs you? You ought to be able to tell us what the difference in the two salaries are so that we can approve some amount of money, not just a blank check.
Currently, the last, the last branch manager that I hired, I brought in at thirty-nine thousand dollars. And that was, that was about three or four years ago.
But so is it, so what's the senior circulation clerk? Are you asking to approve a ten thousand dollar increase?
Jason, you said Betty was making thirteen.
Our highest circulation clerk at the moment makes around fifteen dollars an hour. That would come to thirty-one thousand dollars a year.
Right. So are we talking about a ten thousand dollar increase?
I would say approximately that, yes. But none of these numbers with the, with the HR requests, none of those are, are set in stone yet.
Well, I understand, but I just, as a board, I want to be approving a specific number, not a blank check.
Well, you've got, there's just some numbers.
Well, I, I'd like to say too, that it's my understanding, this was recommended about two years ago and it's been asked for, for a couple of years. And I guess just because Betty has retired is why something's finally being done about it. Um, but that seems to be a pattern where there's not a big overall vision of anything, going back to the systems librarian, it's just fill in the blank, get something done and move on. Um, and so that's discouraging, but a, a, along that same line, when you're talking about an extra clerk at the branch, um, I know Mike has been talking about that and talking about looking and, we may talk about this later, but looking at what's allocated at the other branches, because College Grove and Betty have done an excellent, amazing job with a room about the size of my dining room and the circulation is tremendous. Um, but some of the other branches don't have that. And so I'm not talking about moving a person, but moving a position from one place to another is something that again, is a big picture thing and we're just not seeing a lot of big picture planning right now. I think that's why these things are causing so much angst is because we're just putting out a fire here and putting out a fire there.
Let me, uh, let me respond to that, Janan. I have been warning that position at College Grove changed for several years. And when we did the salary, uh, survey and did the survey adjustments, um, the county would not switch Betty's position over to a branch manager position. Uh, and it had to do with supervising people. And when I had, uh, because Betty didn't supervise anybody, though she did what I thought was branch manager work. So when I, I talked with Mike earlier this week, I stated my case kind of the way I'm state, stating my case now. And, um,
Mike Weber.
Mike Weber, not you, Mike, but Mike Weber. And, uh, so I think hopefully, uh, as I make the case again, uh, it will, it will try, uh, we'll, we'll try and get it. It was not something that I didn't know and that the library needed. It was just something that I have not been able to get funding for.
Well, your answer goes back, let me refer your answer back to a question that Mike cites, asked a few minutes ago. And that is, does the board need to approve this? I don't remember the board ever having been presented this and yet you've talked to HR. So it sounds like to me it's an HR decision rather than board decision.
It is an HR and a, a board decision, but the, the HR department looked at the salary, um, adjustments and the surveys in one lump sum and made recommendations, not just throughout the library, but throughout the whole system. Uh, and Paul may have a, have more of a response to the bigger picture of it. But, um, HR was not just focused on, uh, Betty's position or the library as a whole. It was looking at the sheriff's department, it was looking at all the departments.
Um, if it, if it's helpful to clarify, I think the issue is that to upgrade Betty's position, she has to have a direct report. And that's why we're asking for the 12-hour additional, that the board has to approve, a, a new 12-hour position.
So, Delores, are there going to be three-person, how, how do you want to take these personnel matters? You want to take them one at a time and vote on each one or you want to vote them on as a package?
I would say let's, let's vote, let's vote on each one.
Okay, before you do that, are you going to, are, do you have that spreadsheet that I shared with you?
Yeah, it's in, um, yes, it's in the, it's.
So a year ago, no, eighteen months ago, I, I suggested to you that College Grove needed another part-time position. Not when Betty retired. In fact, I often wonder whether Betty might have stayed longer if she had a little bit of help. But be that as it may.
Is this a charge?
Yeah, that's a charge. So my, my contention personally, I would oppose adding a person, a quarter time, part-time person. We shouldn't need to do a staff addition. If you look at this data, folks, what I've done is worked with Jason and we've calculated the number of full-time equivalents at each location. And then for lack of any other measure, we divi, I divided circulation by the number of full-time people to get some sort of a measure of how many items per person were circulating at a, at a location. But if you look at College Grove compared to Bethesda, College Grove consistently has a heavier workload. Bethesda is the closest branch. Instead of adding a new person or a part-time position, my contention is Bethesda has two full-time and two part-time. One of the part-time resources ought to be moved from another location, for me, it would be Bethesda, to College Grove. So instead of me adding a job, we just monitor and re, and just reallocate an existing resource.
And, uh, Mike, can I respond to that?
Well, sure, it's a free country.
Okay, uh, true, Bethesda doesn't circulate in the way that College Grove circulates. But having spoke to, uh, Lon, the manager out at College Grove, I gave him this hypothetical.
Bethesda, Lon is the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Jason, Bethesda. And I gave him, uh, a hypothetical. And he told me that it would be hard to keep his hours at Bethesda open to the public if, if one of his part-time staff was cut. And that is because story times or any additional program they, they have, they need, uh, they need at least two people there. Uh, people at the desk helping answer questions or check out material. He also, uh, and then others managing the program. Uh, he also said it would be hard to cover if somebody took vacation or sick time. And he said, all of his people, which you don't look at, necessarily look at it individuals in that position, you look at the position as a whole. But right now, his part-time people are all local and, uh, probably hypothetically again, probably would not move to another location.
Okay, so, Delores, I apologize, I'm getting into micromanagement, okay? It's not my job, it's not my job to tell you how to solve the problem, although when you don't solve it, I tend to jump in and do that. You have sixty or seventy people reporting to you. I guess as a, as a member of the board, I'm going to tell you that I'm not supportive of adding a part-time position. Find some other position that's vacant somewhere else at the library and move that job to College Grove. You figure it out.
Yeah, I got, I, Jason, you mentioned that, um, you had interviewed some folks at College Grove, but we weren't paying enough. So I just got another call, uh, we were a search committee and we had that same question, what is the market? So I'm going to ask you, what's the market at College Grove?
Well, I can tell you that the, the people that we applied, that applied for it, um, I don't, I don't know, you know, I can't speak to whether or not they live close to the area, but we had very few applicants for the position once we posted it, a full-time position, thirteen dollars an hour. One was an internal candidate, she lived relatively close, she ultimately turned it down. She currently works, um, uh, I don't think she's part-time, yeah, I guess she's a part-timer in our children's department downstairs.
Yeah, she's part-time.
The other one was a full-time employee, uh, who works in Antioch at a public library. And she applied for the College Grove position. We offered the position to her because she does have a master's in library science and interviewed very well and she turned it down because of the rate of pay.
So how much, how much, what's the dollar number?
And she's making now.
Uh, the job was posted for thirteen dollars in, uh, I believe thirty-five cents? Thirteen dollars in something, uh, is, is what the job was posted. Yeah.
Well, that's a full-time job.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm still haven't got to answer the question. The lady that turned you down from, from the Antioch Library, what was her bottom line? What, how much did she need to make?
Oh, to make it, uh, she never gave.
Paul, she needed to make more than what she was making right now at her current job and that was eighteen dollars an hour.
Okay, so, okay, that's what I'm believing, what's the market? So if we look at that, to me, the market's eighteen an hour. One of the things in, let's, all this discussion, you can take one of the people from Bethesda and put them under the responsibility of the person at College Grove and they could work between College Grove and Bethesda. And that ends up giving your College Grove person a supervisory position. Just a thought, you got to think outside the box. Uh, I'm, I'm torn on this and I want to hear the rest of the board because I'm concerned about continuing to add people. But I like Mike's, College Grove is a, is a gem in our society and, and I want to give them as much as we can when some of the other areas are not working so much. And then, um, I'll just go ahead and do all that we've talked about. Marion mentioned a point about the systems analysis in Brentwood and, right, because we have other staff that are assorted with that, either city or with the library. And so what's the number there, Delores and Jason? Uh, you've got forty-eight thousand dollars on here. What's the market for systems analysts or library, uh, the position, if I have that term right? What's the, what's the market?
Paul, when I looked at it, uh, previously, it, it was all over the place. Miriam can add to this, it depended, it depends upon the loc, depends upon your location.
Everything does.
Everything does. And it, but I can tell you at Nashville, for example, it was, at the time I looked at it, I wanted to say it was, uh, seventy there when I looked at somewhat what other. When I looked at somewhat what other systems librarians were making at other places, it was 40 and 50 throughout the state of Tennessee.
If Nashville's doing 70, I don't think 48's got to cut it. So here's what I, I wanted to say, the other part is, and you mentioned it, Bethesda not having enough people there. I've looked at this and part of this is my bias from being in nonprofits for so long. And there are other county departments that are using many, many volunteers or part-time people to, to teach and to coordinate items because their budget doesn't allow them to have a full-time position. In a perfect world, they would have full-time people, but they don't. So they go to the community and get a volunteer to work at a lower rate or a volunteer just to give their time. And so story time is one of those positions. Uh, let me make this clear. I'm not talking about just the libraries, you would think Brentwood. I'm talking about other agencies that are federal and state involved here. And I'm a big pro, uh, volunteer coordinator. And, and part of the reason is. Major consultant from libraries and, and government that I got says the libraries are going to become event, community type centers. They're not just going to be a place you go get a book or a video game or whatever. You go to the library for story time or computer class or Ukulele class administration. And so the circulation people and those folks are not as important to the future of the library as if someone at the desk or someone coordinating those programs. And so when I see a volunteer coordinator, whether it's a library or a church or another large nonprofit, I see that person bringing these things together, filling the holes. And if we need people at the front desk for circulation, they find volunteers that are very happy doing circulation or very happy doing shelving or very happy doing story time. I've led story time many times at Brentwood Library as a volunteer. So, um, I, I just think that's a hole that we've got. Now I'm going to rely on this board of trustees on these two positions. And if the board votes to, to go with one or both, I'm going to push it through the budget committee. I know the chair, but if the board has issues, then I'm going to have issues. And I, that's why I want the board to kind of come together and give us a no or have another idea or plant this till next month. We got options. But when I go to budget committee, I want to make sure I've got the trustees behind me because I'm the face of this library when it comes to the budget.
Dolores, I, I think you've got the, and Paul, I think we have the right idea to try and figure out how to, if, if we really need a systems librarian, we need to figure out how to use an existing position, not add a new one. But I think you picked the wrong position with the volunteer coordinator. And Paul, you just said that. Find another position. The other concern that I have is I don't think $49,000 is enough money to keep a person. You know, when I retired six years ago, we were paying college graduates with computer degrees $50 to $55,000 a year, no experience in Nashville. This is a hot computer market. If we would find somebody to take the job at 49, I don't think we're going to keep them. I don't think we're going to get a good person and keep them. We're just going to have shuffle. So if they're going to do it, we better do it right.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay. And also respond to what Paul's saying. I think, I think Paul is, is, is absolutely correct in what he said. Libraries are transitioning, have transitioned in many cases to a community center. And, uh, but I'm, you know, what, what we are recommending is not due to the fact that we don't think we need a volunteer coordinator. It's, we're looking at what the most need for the library right now, and that is a systems librarian.
Okay, you said that. Let's, let's, let's figure out and move this on. You know, do you have any more to say for advocating your position?
Jason, did you, I think you had something you wanted to input.
Uh, just to, uh, address the salary question, um, but it's, it's, it can wait if you'd rather move on. Uh, last year when we requested this position, we requested it, uh, as $55,000 a year, which is still frankly, a little bit low to get a systems librarian. Um, and it's, it's maybe sounding like I'm kind of bellyaching here and that's not why I'm bringing it up. But, uh, because the person would be my direct report, HR shot that down because I don't make that much myself. And they would be reporting directly to me, which is why the salary got lowered.
And if, and it's Jason and I were talking earlier. If the board doesn't see the need for a systems librarian, uh, we're going to come back and ask for it next year. So tell us what we need to communicate to you to let you see that we have this severe need for a systems librarian.
Well, Dolores, I think we've already said it. Don't add a position. Figure out how to use an existing job. You've just picked the wrong one with the volunteer coordinator to convert. Secondly, make sure you price it in a way that we're going to get a person and keep a person. I'm sorry that Jason, that it can't report to Jason and have a higher salary. Maybe you need to have it report to somebody, maybe it needs to report to you. Or maybe Jason, you're in the wrong job. Maybe we post this for more money and you take, and you try and qualify for a higher paid job. But it seems really stupid to try and give it a lower salary because of the reporting.
Uh, respectfully, I, I, I disagree just a little bit with you, Mike, because I think it's, it's really clear. I mean, they, there's some, there's some missing pieces here. The, the staff is frustrated, director's frustrated, somebody needs to be doing this stuff. My, um, thought on all of it, I would love to push, I would love more time to think about this and talk about it. But my hesitation to vote to approve it would be simply based on the fact that I just feel like it's chaotic overall. Like every, it, every time we talk about a position tonight, it's someone's doing this, but their title is this. They should be doing this, but they're not. They're actually doing this. And it, it's hard for me to feel inclined to add a position when I feel like it's so, um, it's not clear. So to your question, Dolores, I would, I would say I would vote to approve or vote to add a position if I felt like everything was really clear and organized. And right now, if someone used the expression fighting fires, like that's kind of what it feels like to me right now. And I don't, even Mike, I can't see your face, it's kind of stressing me out. But it, I don't even like the idea of like manipulating this position to fill this and do that. Like we're in one of the wealthiest counties. Like if we need to fill a position, let's fill the position if it's needed. And if the person in that position is going to do the job described. But if it's just going to, this is going to happen all over again and somebody's going to get hired and then not do what their description is and on and on. And again, I'm, I'm a novice here, but that, that is my, that would be my desire is to see that.
Is it, I mean, haven't we heard that for right now, everything's working? The staff have made peace with Koha. And Jason even said not long ago, even though it wasn't perfect, it, it was functioning. So this does not seem to be an urgent thing until we get ever, it doesn't seem to be an urgent thing until we get some of these, um, job descriptions, uh, people who should be doing this and aren't. And staff who are not happy, uh, there's low morale. So it seems like we should deal with some of these issues before we jump again and make another mistake like we made three years ago. I say we, I wasn't there, but anyway.
Dolores, I have a suggestion on how we can move forward. Let, let's vote on the capital and on the operational budgets. And then, then we can decide whether you want to take, put the personnel to a vote or not. But you need those two pieces done today. We're already at almost 90 minutes. You want those done before the commission meeting in March?
Yes.
So I'm going to call for a vote. I'd like someone to make a motion to accept your operational budget. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion to move us forward.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so Rick, Rick made the motion, Randy and Janine seconded it to approve the operational budget as recommended by Dolores with the communications rate increase in it. Any further discussion on the operations? Operational budget. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the operational budget as submitted? Say aye or raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that one passes eight to zero, Randy. All right, let's talk about.
Mike, could you tell me who seconded on that?
Yeah, Janine.
Thank you.
Rick, Rick made the motion. All right, let's, let's do capital request. Dolores, you have, let's, I'd like a motion on the capital request. Dolores had one capital request for $33,000 to replace the carpeting in the fiction section of the main library. Do we have a motion on that? Anyone want to move to approve that?
I, I'll make it to move us forward.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll make the motion.
Rick makes a motion to approve the capital request. Denise seconded it. Any further discussion on that?
Um, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
A question, is this, um, the, um, county's people that are doing this flooring? Or have, were there other bids put in for that?
The Becca, uh, Pendrea Becca Flooring is the one, is the company that we have used to do flooring at the main library and the, and the branch locations. Because they have a state contract for the schools. So, um, they buy, by the fact that they have a state contract, they are, uh, cheaper, cheaper than we could go out and do a bid for it.
Okay, thank you.
They're going to approve some of them.
Um, I have a question. I have a question. Um, last year we voted to put some money into the, um, study rooms for the main library. And I'd like to see at least a little bit of money put in the capital request um, for a study on that because we've been asking and asking and asking for that and nothing's being done.
Okay, uh, Paul, do you have an eye, any kind of an idea as the capital expense to do that study? Because I haven't talked with anyone yet to, uh, to make that happen.
You know, right now you've got volunteer coordinator money that might be turned over, uh, for one year. So, um, I think the idea earlier. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting to that. I'm, I'm big serious about that. But I think the, the other part is, um, where I have trouble is, is we talked about earlier, putting money in there before we have a cost. So if we were going to hire an architect or a facilities, you know, designer, we need to have a number. I'm uncomfortable that we put a number in a budget that we don't have any backup for it. So I think we've got time. If you can go out and find a number from an architect or someone to help with that, then we can plug that in there. Uh, you, you've got your operation budget already approved by this board. So I'm not sure, uh, I think what Janine is asking, Janine is asking is put that in your five-year capital budget. Is that right?
For this next year.
Janine, would another option be to ask the foundation or the friends to fund a study rather than trying to make it a capital request?
You know, um, I'll have to say that's how we got the children's area painted is because the foundation, and thank you, David, um, got that done basically. So, I mean, they didn't do it, but they pushed through for it. So whatever it takes, I think Paul mentioned earlier that that's what libraries are turning to be, is gathering places, meeting places. And we have requests, if you ask people in reference, they'll tell you all the time. They need, people want a place to meet. So, um, again, I think as a board, if we're going to address what the needs are, we need to push forward this. We've asked for it for a while, I think. And I agree, Paul, we need a number, but I, I want to see it done. Paul?
Well, I will, uh, for discussion purposes, I'd be willing to say that we put a $10,000 figure in this capital request uh, for having architectural review, for lack of a better term. I mean, I like Wendell Brown, to be frank with you, who was one of the original designers of the Brentwood and Ensworth libraries. I love those, both those libraries and the way they're designed, but he's not the only guy in town. But that gives us starting place. And, uh, and I mean, knowing about government, we might get to 10,000 and he's a 20. So we spend 10 next June and then get another 10 for next year to spend in the central fiscal year to get things done. Whatever it takes to get it done is, is for.
I'm sorry, Paul, you know, you, you mentioned about the money that they have right now for the volunteer position, which they're not going to be able to fill this year anyway. Is that even a possibility? Would the, would the county approve taking that additional and spending it on, on a?
It's capital.
Doing a study?
This is capital, not operations.
Yeah, that would be, uh, to Marion's point, it's, it's hard to move personnel funds out. If she had excess money in, say, supplies or utilities, that's easier to move for a study. It's really hard to take money out of that until you're right at year end and you get with, with, uh, the finance director and say, look, here's, here's some of what we've got. I'd rather not do that, that way, but it's possible. But, um, I think this other way, we could put a number in and I threw the 10,000 out. The other board members want to add another number. I can advocate for that. And in the meantime, Dolores or whomever can get a hard number from a couple of bidders.
I, I'm thinking that number might be a little low just because of something my daughter has done recently. And she was telling me what she paid an architect. Uh, and so, hi, or leave it at 10,000 and if we needed more, maybe the foundation could help then. Because we're talking about a study to do the meeting rooms, right? Okay.
Yes.
But at least if we put $10,000 in, that, that gives us a marker so that it doesn't, it's not, it stays on the agenda. We keep looking at and working with it as opposed to it just being something we talk at now and then we talk about it again next year.
Okay, sounds good.
I agree, Mr. Chair.
And I think we need to with, Rick and Janine, we need to withdraw the original move, motion and amend it to include a request for $10,000 for the, for the study of the meeting rooms. Is that right, Paul?
I, I would put it in, uh, the study of the main library, uh.
Study.
And uses, not just study rooms.
Okay.
Paul, wait a minute, wait a minute, I missed that. Paul it what, Paul?
Don't, do not limit it to study rooms.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's make the library a better place. I'll accept. I, I easily accept that change.
Okay, so do we need to withdraw or make a new motion or just amend it?
I think it's cleaner for the, for the minutes immediately. Yeah, redo it with the two items.
So let's, let's with you, Janine and Rick, will you withdraw your original motion?
It wasn't me.
Oh, it was Denise that seconded. Denise and Rick are withdrawing. Now let's make a new motion to do both. Somebody, would someone make her?
That's fine. Uh, that's my new motion.
Rick makes a new motion. Do I have a second?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul, please.
Dolores seconded it. So, so Randy, Rick made the motion, Dolores Bratton seconded to do two capital projects. $33,000 for, for, uh, replacing the carpet and $10,000 for a study of programming facilities at the main library.
Very good.
All right.
Programming facilities, I like that.
Any sec, any further discussion on this one? Let's call the question. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, anyone opposed? Okay, so the capital requests passed eight to zero, Randy. Now, let's go back to personnel. You want to take these one at a time, Dolores? How do you want to do this? Or do you want it as one package?
I thought, I didn't think we were going to vote on personnel tonight. We're going to vote on personnel tonight?
I don't know. Do you need it by, what's the deadline for the budget to go to the commission?
It's March, it's the middle of March. They've changed the date on it. Paul, do you know what that is? You're muted.
There we go. There we go. I know. My button would not work. Uh, March 5th. It has been by March 5th.
March 5th, okay.
We don't meet again before March 5th.
Alright, then, I-
So, um, the suggestion- Do you the voter, call a meeting? Call a special meeting.
What do you, what do you want to do, folks?
I can make, I make a motion to call a special meeting.
I don't know if we need a motion to do that, but we can do it.
Or defer it until, so that we can have, uh, better information to vote, make the vote.
Okay.
I, I will second Pandora's motion, this fall.
A special meeting between now and March 5th?
Well, probably March 4th. Dolores has to have it into Nina by March 5th.
That's right, yeah. At least by March 4th.
With the intent to get the information or all of our discussion, you know, what's the dollar amount, what do we really need, and how can we make this work?
That'll give me, that'll give me time to the numbers crunch with HR before we meet again.
I would suggest you bring us three items. If you're gonna have those three, you do them separately, or you, you risk having all of them rejected.
I agree with that. We'll do that one.
In my, in my personal opinion, which you know I'm not bashful about expressing, is you ought to take a hard look to see whether you can't reallocate resource for a part-timer at College Grove from another location, rather than try and add just because the person requires, because elevate the current branch manager, the branch senior person, or branch manager requires a direct report. Find some way to get it without adding. And with the systems librarian, I love the idea of, maybe the systems library is absolutely what we need, but I'm not willing to give up the volunteer coordinator. So try and, I think you got the right idea, but go see if you can't find some other job that's vacant to use as the basis for. It's my opinion.
Do we need to vote on that motion, Mike? That just a chair's prerogative.
He can call, he can call a special meeting himself. I mean, he can be a request, but he does have that power, I think.
I have the power. Do you want to vote on the motion to have a special meeting?
Just to ask you for clarification, Marion did that. I, I think we're good if Pandora is okay with that.
With the motion on the floor, we either have to withdraw the motion or vote on it.
I will withdraw my motion, and then you can-
I will, I will withdraw my, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have a special meeting on personnel. So, unless somebody else wants to discuss it further at this time, we're gonna move on into the- You want to talk about objectives timeline, Denise, or, or Dolores? We're already-
Denise? I, I can't hear you. Oh.
Can't hear you, Denise. Your microphone's on.
Alright, I'll go. Okay, Denise, if you can hear me, we can't hear you, so I'll just continue. Alright. Alright, can everybody else hear me? Yeah. Okay, great.
I can.
Great. Under the February, the objectives due for February, uh, policy procedures manual, Dolores, do you have, uh-
Before this, uh, Dolores, before this meeting, I sent out an email, and it has an, that includes an update on the policy and procedures. It includes, uh, a technology plan update, and a staff organization update, and a COHA update, and a mayor's challenge update.
Okay. Under a policy procedures manual, I did get the section on checkout procedures, uh, and, but this has determined the sections to be updated. Do you have a list of all the sections that need to be updated?
Dolores, what they're doing is, the committee is going through the whole manual, and they have made, they've made changes since what I had submitted today. And then I put in my report that, um, Lila has been on vacation and what have you, and I will get an update from them, um, next week. What I submitted today was, was previous to their last meeting. They've had a meeting since then that Lila did not attend, so I'm just trying to get the updates.
So we have the one section that was updated, but are we to assume that all the sections will be updated by May?
All the sections, yes.
Alright, alright. Uh, the technology plan quarterly update. You did, uh, make the corrections. I have one thing on the addendum. Uh, you added the sentence, uh, but left the original. The original, uh, should be taken out and just the other sentence put in there. In the addendum.
Okay.
And the other one was updated simply with a date, so I guess that's okay.
Yeah, I think the committee has helped me work on that, and I think that's been changed.
Okay, uh, COHA, we've probably talked enough about that. Is there anything else about COHA?
No, I just, I included, uh, previously, the COHA committee report, and then today, um, I just did, I did an update. So it's in the email I sent earlier today.
Mayor's challenge?
That is also included in the report that I sent earlier. We have gotten, um, cards to commissioners, to, to county commissioners, Brentwoods, uh, and Franklin, uh, Boma's, and Spring Hill. We've also ordered yard signs that should be at the printers. We'll have to check next week.
Did that go to all board members?
What I said today, earlier today?
Yes.
Yes, it went to every, should, should have went to everybody.
Dolores, um, who, who is getting those yard signs?
We're putting them at, uh, all the branch locations.
Okay. Um, I was thinking like, might be kind of fun if like, you know, um, I think like, um, the Hickman Humane Society sort of did that when they were, they were trying to raise funds. People like, just them, so they could put them in their yard. Just might get some extra for staff or whoever that might want one. It was just a, just a thought I had.
Paul can give them to all the commissioners, and they can put them in their yards.
I never see them anymore, but this is how I see them.
But you're saying that all the commissioners have received library cards?
Yes, uh, Paul, there's an image of it in the report that I sent out earlier today.
Right, right. I saw the image. I'm just saying, I never see commissioners. We zoom.
Oh, you zoom, okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't meet in person anymore.
Okay, that's true. I can, I can get them today, and then you and Diane can make sure they put them out in their yards.
Okay, that's- How were you able, how were you able to get the cards to the commissioners? Did you mail them to them?
Yes.
You mailed them, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Like, the commissioner cards would go to the, uh, administrative office complex. Brentwoods went to the Brentwood Municipal Complex, because we didn't have, um, we didn't have personal addresses for everybody.
Are there any questions on the February objectives? Okay, then the November one, uh, that was still, uh, working on, how are we on that one, Dolores?
Uh, which November one are we referring to?
The one that was incomplete, the staff organizational of branches.
Oh, that is what, uh, Mike and Jason were working on. Part of that was, uh, on the slide earlier tonight.
A lot of that, Dolores, is work in progress, and the, the kind of circular conversation we had here today, uh, has been a bit of what that committee's run into, in my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, January, it was the evaluation plan for staff and grievance procedure, uh, to be communicated to the staff?
Yeah, you see, I think it came from you. You sent, uh, the, uh, evaluation after you had talked with Carla, I think it was, at HR.
Yes.
And I responded to that with some changes, but I also had a conversation with Mike and Carla about that. I would like to discuss that at our leadership team meeting in a couple of weeks. Because I think, I think we're about good to go. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, and if there's any tweaking that need to be, that needs to be done, it can be done.
I had a question, I had a question on the grievance policy. Is that, um, an internal grievance policy, or is that like above and beyond Williamson Counties, or is that Williamson Counties?
It would be-
I think it would be internal.
Yeah, Williamson, or we can adopt, I mean, we can adopt the grievance procedures out of the county personnel manual. We, I think that's something that we've got up for discussion. I've sent, um, some grievance, uh, drafts to, um, the board, well, to the leadership team.
You have? Mm-mm.
Y'all haven't seen them?
No.
Okay, I can, I'll send them, I'll send them to you again before the next meeting.
Which evaluation are you referring to?
The one that you-
One from HR, or?
Yeah, the one that you, the one that you sent after the discussion with HR. That's the one I'm talking about.
Alright.
I would like to discuss that one. I would like to discuss that one with the leadership team at the next meeting.
So is that the one you're planning on using?
I would, yes, but we, I, I would like to, to talk about it and see if there's any tweaking that anybody would like to do.
I think we also need to talk about not just the form itself, but how it's gonna be administered when we meet.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, well, let me just ask you, rather than take more time, are there any updates to these things that were incomplete? As, as opposed to going over each one, because everyone has this list, uh, and the dates that they were due. So if there are, if there has been work done, then share that as opposed to me going over each one. I think that might be faster.
Okay.
I have a question.
Denise, do you have anything to add? No, we can't.
We, we have these policy-
We're gonna meet next week on the, sorry.
Okay, this Paul, I, we got the policy revisions today. Is this part of the objectives that are just for our information? Are we supposed to take action on that? I wasn't exactly sure what, what we were doing with the policy revisions today.
Okay. What was supposed to be to us today was a list of the sections that were to be updated. They were supposed to be reviewed at a list to us of what was going to be updated, and it should all be complete by May.
Okay.
And the committee is looking at the whole policy manual, and they, uh, what you have, what I sent earlier today is where they are in the revision process, but as mentioned earlier, they're reviewing the whole policy manual.
So no action today?
Uh, no, there's nothing to take action on.
Anything else, Dolores?
No.
I know we're really running long. Maybe we can quickly, so the mayor's membership challenge, we've already talked quite a bit about that. I sent a sample report out today, just showing tracking data on the membership challenge, the percentage each month. Jason, if you want to do a better graph, I'm fine with that, but I'd like to see some, some attachment to our monthly report that shows where we, that shows our trend.
Sure, I can put that together easily enough.
I mean, you know, if you want to, if you got a better idea than the bar graph I sent out, that's great.
Yeah, that, that works fine. I mean, the numbers are gonna change no matter how it's presented, you know, so, yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll put something together in the statistics.
Got a lot of activities. I want to have a method for us at a glance, seeing whether we're making headway.
Sure, no problem, yeah.
Committee reports, let's, let's try and do them, you know, get to them. Janine, do you have anything, or Amy, on strategic planning?
Um, Dolores included that in her report to, I haven't, we are letting the staff take care of that. I think they're working on the survey. We have another meeting planned for the end of March, and it's to be presented in April, so I'm assuming everything's on track.
We're on, we're on track. We, uh, we're gonna have another meeting, you know, and probably next week, and we're gonna take the survey down. We, we, uh, we dampen somewhat, focus on non-users.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, uh, echo what they said.
Okay.
Rick and Pandora, anything on the organizational committee?
Um, I believe our meeting has been, um, moved to February 25th, is that right? I don't have it in front of me.
I hit, I hit the wrong button, yeah, we're, we're-
That's correct.
-made on 25th.
Okay. Any other committee reports? If not, we'll move to the commissioner.
Uh, the, in interest of time, the quick thing is COVID questions, go to the county website, there's a COVID page. Those of you who want to sign up, there'll be instructions on how to sign up for the vaccine, and updates, and I encourage you to check it two or three times a week, because the CDC and the State Department of Health, uh, change this thing constantly. So if you are issued a vaccine and haven't gotten it yet, and want to know how to sign up, keep, uh, going to the county website, the COVID section. That's what I'll do for now, Mike.
Marion?
From the regional- Yeah, there's, uh, I did send a written report, if y'all didn't get it. Mike, could you send it out to the group? Has I sent it to them?
I did forward it.
You did.
I just-
Uh, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is the state library, I think, will open in April. And the other thing is, Mike and Paul, I think already know about this, but a legislation has been proposed, uh, on the state level to, um, do away with the regional library boards. They're, they're advisory only, and so it's getting harder and harder across the state to get people to volunteer to travel to, um, the regional office four times a year to attend these meetings. So, um, if, if that legislation does pass, it will not take effect until July of 2022, so as to give, uh, regional board members an opportunity, time to, uh, take local board positions, should they come open, and if they want to continue to be active with their local library. Does anybody have any questions about that? We will probably propose as a regional level, um, something to replace that, to allow libraries, um, to share ideas, possibly by having, uh, a meeting of board chairs or something like that, but that's for the future to work out those details, should the legislation pass. That's pretty much all I have to report.
Thank you, Marion. David Mitchell, I know you're, I see you're out there. Um, I want to welcome, I want to echo Janine in welcoming you as the new president of the foundation. I also want to thank you. I, I see you're affiliated with Raymond James, and Raymond James is a sponsor of Masterpiece on PBS, and I'm a big, I'm a big massive. My wife and I watch Masterpiece all the time, so thank you to your company for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for letting me sit in on this.
And thanks for listening for so long. I'm very sorry that you had to listen to so much deliberation, but we're an engaged board. I, I can't apologize for that. So, what, what can you tell us about yourself and the foundation?
Uh, yes, I've been with the foundation for, uh, I guess probably around four, maybe five years now. Um, I was with Franklin Synergy Bank, uh, before we merged with First Bank, and, uh, as you said, I'm with, on the investment side, so I've been affiliated with Raymond James, uh, going back, um, seven years, seven, eight years now, so. Um, but yeah, and I'm just happy, excited to be, um, leading the board now, the foundation board, and, um, hopefully we can keep providing- and hopefully we can keep providing sponsorship and all for the summer reading program and ex, you know, expand on that. But now, yeah, just appreciate you having me on.
Well, we appreciate all you guys do for us, filling in gaps and helping us with things we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. We're very blessed to have such an engaged foundation board.
Absolutely, no, appreciate it.
Okay, chairman report. So just a quick check. We're going to have a special meeting. When I'm looking at my calendar, the 4th of January is a Thursday. You want, Dolores, do you want me to wait till the 4th of Jan, if we go with our Thursday pattern for a special meeting? Paul, do you think they're going to, the governor's going to extend the state of emergency so that we'll be able to do virtual meetings beyond the end of February?
Mike, it's hard to say. There are announcements coming out all the time, so I, I would think we would probably be safe at that time, and if not, then we can make a quick change. As long as we announce it, we're having one. The public notice part is the only concern I've got.
Yeah, well, Dolores, we could go to the February 25th, which is a week from today, but I don't know if that gives you enough time to pull your, to get your act together.
Well, I always have my act together, but it depends. Yet, I can do, I can do either day. March 4th would probably give me time to get everything together and make any changes for submission for the next day. What time would you guys still meet?
We've got our staff, we've got our organizational meeting scheduled now for the 25th.
Right.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do.
Bounce around a bunch, and it's time to quit bouncing.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to do. We're going to tentatively plan on March the 4th for the special meeting, and we're going to do it virtually. If the governor doesn't extend the deadline, we may have to reconsider our plan, because I hate to see a bunch of people have to come to Franklin just, just for that one purpose.
Mr. Chair, Dolores, if we do that, to give them time to get that to finance, and knowing that some, if we have to meet, could we maybe do it during the middle of the day, during lunchtime, say between 11:30 and 1:00? Gives the staff a little more time to make any changes. We have, get it in format and get it over to the admin office on the morning of the 5th.
We can do it a day earlier, or two days earlier, as far as I'm concerned, or middle of the day. But there are several people here that are still working for a living.
And that's why I said the middle of the day. We had a Zoom call at, at lunch. That's the only suggestion I had, but I'm, I'm concerned to be, having it at 4 o'clock. I can do it either. Yeah.
We could do it on the 3rd at 4 o'clock.
I'm good with lunchtime, too.
I can't do.
I'm good.
I'm good with any clock.
You put, what was that, Dolores?
I can't do 4 o'clock on the 3rd.
Okay. About the 2nd. Tuesday is 2nd.
What time?
Good with that one, too.
Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Can you repeat that, please?
I'm trying to see if we move it to Tuesday the 2nd at 4 o'clock. Are people available?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so tentatively, the plan is the 2nd. That'll give you a few extra days to get your, your material together, even though, even though you said you always have your act together. We want you to get, we want you to get your facts together.
Okay.
Mike, is this going to be, is this online or in person?
I'm hoping for online.
Okay.
I'm, I'm thinking that the governor's going to probably have to extend the state of emergency in some form or fashion, but I may be wrong, Paul. If I were a gambling man, I bet he'll extend it.
I'm waiting.
Okay, Dolores, what do you have? Anything else for, for us today?
No, just, just the additional information I mailed out before the meeting.
How's your health?
I'm doing good. Thank you for asking.
What about your family?
Almost back to normal. I'm sorry?
What about your family?
Uh, my sister's doing great. Mom had to go back to the ER yesterday, but they did some tests, and now she's, she's back at NHC for a while, trying to get stronger, so. She's a tough cookie, that's for sure.
And it's a tough disease.
Yes, it is.
All right, that's everything that I have.
Wait, wait, I have one more thing. It goes along with that.
Me, too.
The, the COVID plan, the last time I saw it, it was a draft. Did it ever get approved? I mean, is it a final plan for the library?
Was that the, the priority, the list of priorities?
It was just a plan as to what to do.
Yes, yes, and we also put together a list of, a list of procedures for the staff that managers put at each, in each department and each branch, so that the staff will have it on hand if something, something happens and they need to refer to it.
Maybe you can send a copy of that to the board. That'd be good.
Okay.
Because the last we saw of it was a draft copy.
Okay. Mike, I have one thing to add before we adjourn. And that is, on the evaluation objectives, these objectives on the director's evaluation, these were agreed on, voted on, approved, whichever term you wish to use. And we set a timeline as a help to stay up on these, and I felt that the board felt this was important, that these objectives and meeting the timeline was important. And I would really like to see more attention given by the director to meeting the goals that she has agreed to and that we have set as we move forward. And I don't feel like that has been done thus far, but I do feel it's important and that we should stand by those. That's all.
Let's talk about this, Dolores, at the leadership team meeting, because I, I consider the staff and myself to have been very diligent on putting this information together and getting it to, to the board.
We will definitely discuss it.
Let's talk about it.
Wait, for sure. Yes.
That meeting would be March the 3rd at 9:00, unless we change our pattern.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mike, what was, what's the fact?
I have a class that I teach that starts at 6:00, so I do apologize, I have to go.
Well, we're about wrapped up. Go.
Thank you, guys.
Move to a jern, then.
Rick, did you want us to adjourn?
I'm moving to a jern.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Sorry it took so long.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Night. Bye.
Good night. Hey, y'all.
Bye.